Welcome to the September 29th, 2020 Town Council meeting. We are going to shortly go into executive session, so we'll be leaving you for a little bit in just a moment. I'm calling this meeting to order and I see that all councilors are in attendance. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll move into executive session. I pledge allegiance. Thank you. So as we move into executive session, we need a roll call vote to so move.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded myself, yes, Julie.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Ed.
Hi.
Maureen.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll be moving into executive session now, folks, thank you.
Madam Chair, did you state the purpose?
I did not state the purpose, no. Well, thank you very much about that. Sorry about that. Town Council is moving into executive session for discussion of town's legal strategy and litigation concerning Wood subdivision. Executive session is anticipated and we are moving into that. Before I check with Sheri on public engagement, I just want to have a short moment of silence for a young mother who died suddenly in our town, Pam Wickwire. She was a kindergarten teacher in Malden, her husband Robert, mom to Dylan and Joshua. I didn't know Pam, although she looks very familiar and, but you know, someone who was a sports mom and loved hockey and clearly was beloved by the community. So if we could just have a short moment of silence. Thank you. And obviously, our best wishes and condolences go to her family and friends. Sheri, do we have any public engagement?
Yes, we do. We have Nancy Bertrand on and Erin Fopiano from the Hartshorn House.
Excellent, okay, Nancy and Erin, if you want to take it, you can identify yourselves and then just talk about craft beer, I think. Maybe?
I mute myself. Can you guys hear me okay?
I can hear you, yes, Erin, thank you.
Okay, thank you for having me tonight. So the Hartshorn House is doing its annual beer tasting, it's the third beer tasting, it's going to be a virtual event on October 17th from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. And that is the lovely flyer that has all the key information on there. The tickets are now available online, there's going to be, it's a fundraiser for the Hartshorn House. There's going to be three speakers, there's going to be Nancy Bertrand is going to be talking about some of the history of Wakefield, of taverns in Wakefield. And including other Wakefield tales of some of the folks that live in the Hartshorn House. We're going to have Malcolm Puritan on the line, he's a professor from Northeastern University who specializes in, believe it or not, the history of food and drink in early America. So he's going to be talking a little bit about that. And the Boneup Brewery in Everett is going to be brewing a special beer for the event called History Mystery, History Mysteries Brew. So the tickets are going to be $40 for a couple or for two guests and that includes 64 ounces of beer. The beer can be delivered to your home if you're within 10 miles of the brewery in Everett, or you can pick it up at the Hartshorn House, or you can pick it up at the brewery. The tickets are going to be on sale from now until the 15th of October. Does anyone have any questions about the event?
Erin, is it? Will it sell out?
Well, unlike in the past where we were limited to the capacity of the rooms of the Hartshorn House, which are pretty small, we could only have in the past 50 guests at the event. So we're hoping that, so that's why in the past we had two sessions, we're hoping that, you know, we can accommodate more than that in one session.
Great, that's excellent. And the tickets will be posted on the website and?
Yeah, you can go onto Facebook and you can also go on the Hartshorn House website.
Excellent, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? I don't see any hands raised.
All right, that's good.
So we need a, Sheri, Steve, do we need a vote for this?
I think we need to give a one day liquor license.
Yeah.
Even though everyone is going to be consuming beer in their own home, we do need a liquor license for one day.
Okay. So if someone could please make a motion and second the liquor license for the Hartshorn House for one day, October 17th.
So I'd be willing to make that, I'd be willing to make the motion, I'd actually be willing to make the motion if we did this on a monthly basis. But for these purposes, the motion for a one day liquor license for the purposes stated.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you. If it's successful, we might do another one in the spring or in the winter, we'll see.
Say winter, definitely. Seconded by Paul, roll call vote to allow the liquor license, Ed.
Madam Chair, can I just?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jonathan, didn't see your hand.
So I know just from conversations with Sheri that we've moved on to an online permitting system, which is wonderful and first of all, thank you to Sheri for doing that. I just wanted to validate that, you know, we've received all of the information that we would need to move ahead with the license, Ms. Dalton. Great, thank you.
Yes, we have, yeah.
Okay, so do I have to fill something out online because I've never done this before, I'm new to this?
No, it was, it was filled out online.
Oh, okay, perfect, so someone's already done that.
Yeah, Nancy Bertrand might have did it, yeah.
Oh, okay, excellent.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
So moving along with the vote, myself, yes, Paul.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
And Maureen.
Yes.
And Ed, I got you earlier. Excellent, well, we're all looking.
Quick question, so if you don't want to buy the beer, I assume you can just go on and make a donation and watch the, you'll take other donations, not for the beer?
Absolutely.
And you can just do that on the same page?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great question.
You could also, Julie, share the beer with a fellow councilor.
It'd be nice to me.
That's a good point because I know not everyone likes beer, so yes, you can donate online.
Awesome, thanks. Thank you so much, Erin, for presenting and we wish you the best of luck with the event.
And one other thing I just wanted to say to Julie's question, I'm sorry to, but if somebody for some reason wants extra beer for some reason, right? If they want to buy bone up t-shirts or something like that, you can also do that at the brewery or online.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Tom, I can't wait, yes.
This unites two of my favorite interests, history and beer. I just wanted to note that Benjamin Franklin said, "The existence of beer proves that God loves us and wants us to be happy."
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sheri, any more public engagement?
Nope, there's nobody else.
Awesome, thanks, Sheri. I need a motion to approve the minutes from my last meeting, September 14th, 2020. Moved by Paul. Seconded by Julie, roll call, Ed.
Yes.
Yes, myself, Paul.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Peter. And Maureen.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Item number six, strike that, item number seven, moving to appointments. We have one appointment to make for the Traffic Advisory Committee, you should have received all that in your packet. And Mr. John Connors, do we have a motion and a second to appoint John Connors?
So moved.
Moved by Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Ed, any discussion? Great, take the vote, Ed?
Yes.
And yes, Paul.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Peter.
Yeah.
And Maureen.
Yes.
Excellent, Mr. Connors is appointed to Traffic Advisory. We have another appointment to fill an unexpired term through April 30th, 2022 of the Conservation Commission, Ms. Silvana Bullhal. We also received a note from Chair, the Chair of CONCOM, speaking very highly of her and suggesting that the board would welcome her to join them. Do I have a motion to appoint Ms. Bullhal? Moved by Jonathan. Seconded by Paul, any discussion? Roll call, Ed?
Yes.
Yes, Paul.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
And Maureen.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. We also have a number of folks to appoint to the Veterans Advisory Board, as you know, this board doesn't have a limit on its members and they welcome as many who would like to participate. The names are Paul Consigliere, Marion Dennehy, Brian McCubrey, Sean McGrath, and Jackie Milner. Jackie was listed as a non-veteran, but she is a veteran, she's a veteran of the US Air Force, so I just wanted to clarify that for what was included in our packet. We have four veterans and a Gold Star wife. So would someone like to move to appoint the slate of names just read to Veterans Commission?
So moved. Thanks.
Yeah, moved by Paul, seconded by Ed. Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor, vote, Ed?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Paul.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
Excellent. That's great that they're getting so many folks to volunteer for that board. Okay. We, next, we have appointments as requested to the Police Department Advisory Committee. And this is Chief Scory sent a list of Wakefield police officers that he would like to see participate in the process within an advisory committee. He sent this to Joe Bertrand. Chief Scory indicated that the committee will be made up of the following representatives, Steve Scory, Deputy Chief Calabrese, Lieutenant Scott Robelay, Sergeant Richard Giannano, Sergeant Sean Beatty, Sergeant Kevin McCall, Officer Amy Rando, and Officer Shane Pelletier. Do I have a motion and a second to accept the names as presented to this committee by Chief Scory?
So moved.
Moved by Ed?
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion, Paul.
Madam Chair, just a quick question, this is, seems to be the same thing that we just recently did for the DPW, for their advisory board as well. And on that one, we had the councilor's liaison as a member of that committee. I'd like to make the recommendation that we add the councilor's liaison to the Police Department, to this committee as well, too, to make it consistent.
I just want to clarify, and Steve, you might, not that I'm against putting the liaison in touch, but this is, is this a slightly different committee than the DPW one?
It is a slightly, it is, it's the same purpose, though, it's the user group of the building that's being looked at, this was part and parcel of a, I guess, a charter change.
Right.
Well, I see no problem with adding the liaison, I think the liaison would probably be there anyway, but I think it's good to add the liaison.
Right, yeah, I think the liaison would be welcomed with open arms to this meeting, liaison, but do you accept this role?
I would love to put the meeting on my calendar. Be sending you a thank you gift.
It's always awesome when that happens like that. So based on Paul's discussion, we can add Maureen to that list. So roll call vote, Ed?
Yes.
Yes, I could read lifts on you, so.
I know.
Myself, yes, Paul.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
And Maureen.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. We also need to appoint, as requested by Betsy Sharon, border, our town clerk, an appointment to the Board of Registars, Barry Neis. Do I have a second, a motion and a second for Mr. Neis?
So moved.
So moved, Jonathan, seconded by Ed, any discussion? Seeing none, vote to appoint Mr. Neis to a Board of Registars, Ed?
Yes.
Yes, myself, Paul. Paul? Jonathan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Excellent, okay. So our final duty under this item is, we need a motion to authorize Town Council Clerk, Sheri Dalton, to advertise to fill an unexpired term on the school committee. So as you all know, Chris Callanan has indicated his resignation from the school committee. We had opened up and received, Sheri, four or five applications already?
Yeah, I think we've received about five.
Okay, so whatever we received prior, those folks do not have to reapply, we have their applications. But because we have another seat, we're opening it up for a week. Sheri, is the date to close on October 8th?
You are correct, yes.
Okay. So on October 8th, when it's closed, we'll compile if we have any more resumes, send them out to the boards, and then this will, we'll have a joint meeting with Town Council and School Committee to appoint two people to fill the two slots open on the school committee. And that will occur October 15th at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Does anyone have any questions with regard to the procedure or?
I would move a motion to have the posting as described.
Thank you, seconded, anyone seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Paul, any discussion of the motion? I see no hands, fine, great, let's take the vote, Ed?
Yes.
Yes, myself, Paul.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And Ma- Maureen?
Yes.
Great, so we'll have that posted tomorrow, I think, Sheri?
Yeah, correct, yes.
Excellent, and open through October 8th. Thank you. So now, if we could have, for those prepared tonight or who wish to, to provide some liaison updates for your particular boards and either just give a wave or this, would someone like to present, start? Maureen?
Okay, so just to give you an update on three liaisons that I serve, first, Council of Aging checked in with Judy and the Council of Aging is continuing with their transportation services. They're doing some small group gatherings that are socially distanced and they are also doing some socially distanced home visits. So Council of Aging is still doing their work, if you want to reach out, their staff is still helping folks and just a little reminder to check in on seniors throughout the town if you can during this time. Second update from the library, the library's been doing amazing stuff and I got some numbers for all the number folks out there. Since July 6th, they've done 4,329 curbside pickups of 15,000 items. They serve about 80 people a day and they've done over 100 virtual programs, which is just amazing that they're able to do that. They are preparing to loan Chromebooks and hotspots and actually start side door printing services, so people that are waiting for those services. And then I talked about this at our last meeting, but just a little bit more information, through Jackie Powers, we received a federal grant called Commit to Your Community. And so there's going to be virtual events, with the first event on October 28th with a keynote speaker, go to their website, they have more information. But really great federal grant that we got in Wakefield, talking about how you can get involved in your community. And then the last update is just as police liaison, also more good news about stuff going on in town. So we have three recruits currently in Week 10 at the Lowell Police Academy, they're all doing well, so we'll have three new officers shortly. Officer Amy Rando completed a course this month on Massachusetts Civil Rights, so she is becoming the expert on civil rights in our Police Department. And then 18 officers this month attended an implicit bias training, which is something we had talked about. And so I'm hoping to hear more about that from Chief Scory, but just wanted to relay that to everyone. And then the last update from the Police Department, Matt Malone began his new assignment as a school resource officer at the high school. So really nice officer who will now be at the high school. I think that's it.
That's great, Maureen, thank you so much, and what the library is doing is just amazing, phenomenal, so awesome, thanks so much. Would someone else like to report on their departments, Jonathan?
Thank you, Madam Chair, so maybe just piggybacking off of the appointment of our new school resource officer, I'll start with the School Department. So as folks may have been aware, if you were driving through town today, today was the first day of Phase 3 of the reopening plan for the schools, which was the beginning of the hybrid model. So the kids have been back mostly remotely since the 17th, but today was the first day of hybrid instruction, so it was the first day that a lot of our kids actually got to be back in the buildings. You know, just, I can give you my own personal observation from my own kids, I think it was really successful. I really commend the School Department, the teachers, the administrators for really pulling this off and I can tell you, at least based on my own little sample of four kids, that I think they were really, really excited to be there. Just as an update for folks who maybe haven't been following a lot of the discussions on the school committee side, the way the hybrid model works is that they'll have alternating cohorts of kids in school approximately halftime. And what halftime means depends on the schooling level, so at the high school, it's two full days in and three out, at the elementary school level, it's actually four half-days in. And so they came up with a schedule that is developmentally appropriate for each, each phase of school. For the time that the kids are remote, they do have a mix of synchronous and asynchronous work. One of the things, again, just as an observation as a parent that I've seen, is there's a lot more synchronous work than they had in the spring, reflective of the fact that the departments had a lot more time to prepare with the summer. But that's also been, I think, a welcome change for the kids and has really helped with the level of engagement and, you know, the ability to be able to move forward with, I think, more instruction rather than just kind of maintenance. There is an option available for families to be fully remote if they're not comfortable with hybrid, there definitely are families that have done that. And the School Department's been pretty flexible about giving people the opportunity to move back and forth as circumstances change or is their level of comfort changes. What the hybrid model does is it allows the kids to be socially distant in school, because there also are breaks in the school day where the kids aren't there, it allows for some pretty frequent cleaning. And in fact, tomorrow on Wednesday, every school in the district will be fully remote on Wednesdays, so they can do a full deep clean and they'll also do deep cleanings between the times when the cohorts are there. The other thing that the School Department has done is they've engaged with a consultant to study airflow and they've taken mitigation measures to assure that every classroom has adequate airflow and that the turnover rates for air in the classrooms are where they need to be consistent with public health guidelines. So the intent going forward is as long as Wakefield remains in the green category, in the state's categorization of where the towns sit for COVID, that will stay in the hybrid mode. So again, encourage folks to continue to be vigilant, continue to wear your masks and wash your hands so that hopefully we can, we can keep moving forward where we are. If the data do show that we are seeing another surge, the department is prepared to go into, into a remote-only mode, again, based on sort of what they've built for this cycle and some of the great work that's already happening on the remote side. So that's where things are with the schools, again, a ton of work going on, both for the School Committee, the administration, and the teachers. So really wanted to call them out and thank everyone who's involved for all of their great work there. Couple of other quick updates on the Planning Board side, the Board recently approved the Lovisav Extension Subdivision, which will be three new single-family lots in Greenwood near the Stonem line. You know, having observed some of that, sitting in on some of their meetings, you know, really good collaboration with the neighbors and I think the landowner and the developer, you know, really had a good dialogue with some of the abutters and they were really supportive of that process, which was great to see. Folks may have seen one of the last subdivisions that was approved, 107 Prospect Street, construction's begun there, if you live in that area, you see a lot of movement there. That's also three lots and was approved by the Board several months ago. And then finally, they are having a public hearing on October 13th related to the zoning amendment that was proposed by the Savings Bank. This was the proposed amendment that we referred to them at our last meeting, that will be coming in front of Town Meeting in November. Finally, just quickly on my, my third assignment, the Albion Cultural Exchange, they're working on some signage for the front of the building, having seen some of the prototypes, I think the options look good and it'll be exciting to see that come out there and add some recognition to the resource that we have there. They've also been working on a plan to add a handicap accessible entrance into the building. They recently completed the restrooms, handicap accessible restrooms, which of course, no one's used yet because the building's been closed because of COVID, but someday they'll be used. So they are working on a plan for the accessible entrance and trying to figure out where, where that will go in the building and how they'll move forward with that. And then the third thing that they're trying to think through is how and when do they reopen? So they're, they fall under sort of the museums and the state's reopening plan, and so they're trying to figure out, you know, if it's feasible or advisable for them to have some way to start to run exhibits in the building, obviously following social distance guidelines and things like that. So a lot going on, any questions that folks have?
I see two hands up, I don't know if they're questions or just folks reporting next on their liaison role. Julie and Ed, questions? No, perfect, Jonathan, thank you so much, that was great. And I think Phase 3 went, went through very smoothly so far in the planning of it, so I give such kudos to the school. Julie and then Ed?
I actually think Ed was in front of me, so.
Oh, okay. All right, Ed, we'll go to you.
Either way, it's fine, I'm happy to go second. All right, so I'll give an update then on economic development, there are a few things that I can report back. One relates to the Economic Development Director position that we had spoken about and was the subject of our last Town Meeting. In speaking with Mr. Mayo, we had a screening committee of 11 candidates that had been interviewed, all of whom had experience. And Mr. Mayo is now in the second round of interviews, I believe it's down to about two candidates and those interviews will be tomorrow. And the hope is that this person will be put in place by November 1st. And Mr. Mayo, if you have anything to add to that, by all means.
Yeah, that is exactly, it could be persons or I think hybrid, maybe the, the watchword of the, of the year. We may see if we can bring in both talented members, but I can't give too much away because I'll be in negotiations tomorrow.
We're welcome to be preparing all night for these interviews to really wow you, so absolutely. The next piece of that is I wanted to update where we stand through the tremendous work that the Wakefield, Lynnfield Chamber of Commerce has been doing in town. I have been in contact with John Smolinski, who's just done a phenomenal job along with Maria, they've been able to maintain a lot of the programming, helping small businesses, PPP programming, family leave programming, a lot of different programs that are going on. And something that a lot of people may not be aware of is other chambers of commerce are actually struggling and in fact, furloughing their staff. And John gave me a few examples of nearby communities that are doing just that because of the pandemic. Despite the fact that membership is a little bit off right now in terms of renewals, there are new members that are coming onboard, which is great. And so all in all, I think. And so all in all, I think that things are going as well as could be expected under the circumstances and I think it's tremendous credit to the chamber for the work that they're doing. I will say that they have a program that most recently was this past Saturday, you may have noticed, in town from 10 to 5. And it's called Saturdays on the sidewalk. And it's an opportunity for anyone who spends $50 or more on products and services at any Wakefield business excluding restaurants to text a photo of your receipt. And you then receive a $10 gift card that can be used at a number of participating eateries within town. That has been made possible by the two banks, the savings bank and Wakefield Cooperative Bank. And in total, there's been about 100 of those $10 gift cards distributed out. And the great thing about that, obviously, is aside from everyone, you know, enjoying benefits, that $10 then goes to the business, a local business in town. And undoubtedly, that $10 is probably put towards a much larger purchase for that business, you know, at a restaurant, maybe a $25, a $30 or $40 bill. So it's really a great way to try to draw members of our community to other restaurants to shop local and to make sure that, you know, we're supporting our own economy and our own workers. So that's been a great success story. And again, a lot of credit to the chamber for being able to do as they've been doing. And then otherwise, I think the biggest challenge that I was speaking with the chamber about is, and it's a concern that I've had for some time. We live in the Northeast and the weather's going to change. And what will happen for outdoor dining? We have a real energy and excitement in town now with a number of outdoor dining establishments. How can we work through the coming months to make sure that they have revenue that maintains at least at current levels, if not increases, despite the fact the weather might be getting colder? And so I explored some options with John Smolinski on that. He's going to be serving a number of different businesses. And, you know, I certainly told him that I was confident that the town would do anything that we could too to help make sure, you know, we're helping businesses in any way that we can. But you know, things like heaters and the like will probably be questions that will be coming up for businesses. But all businesses, whether you're a chamber member or not, should know that the chamber is a resource and is committed to helping all businesses get through this. So by all means, please reach out to the chamber or reach out to me or any of us on the council too, if you have any concerns, because we want to make sure that transition, as the weather does get colder, is as smooth as we can make it. So with that, Madam Chair, I think that's the update.
And I know I've mentioned this before. I would urge anyone who can envision a beautiful outdoor setting. And I know we're not Andover, but drive through Andover Center. They have music on, you know, maybe Thursday, Friday, Saturday night. They have speakers outside, not competing, they seem to be for all of the restaurants. They have heaters, they have, you know, barriers that are, I've said before, look quite nicely. But I think any of us who have traveled, whether it's to Indianapolis or other cold parts of this country, a lot of them have established outdoor dining throughout the winter for years now. So I don't think it's something we should run away from. I think financially, if we can do it and make it work, why not? So thanks, Ed. That was a great update. Julie?
Thank you. So I have a report quickly on the Environmental Sustainability Committee. As I mentioned at a previous meeting, the committee did vote to pursue the Green Communities designation, and that'll be about a year-long process. And we'll be talking about that further as a council certainly, and there'll be a lot of input for town as well. We are up to over 1,000 pounds on the Bags to Benches Challenge. So that's two benches. We're going for four, one for each of the elementary schools. So people can drop off their bags at the back of Town Hall. And it's not just reusable shopping bags, it's any bags really that you use in your home either. So bread bags, the plastic Amazon bags that come in bulk now that we're ordering everything online. So please continue to drop those off. And the DPW's been fabulous about helping us process that. The other thing that I'm really pleased is that the DPW has a position on the committee and has been really utilizing the group to solicit feedback. And one of the big things coming up is the bid for a new recycling contract. And so they are soliciting information from the members and of course, anybody in the general public. They're going to be putting that out to bid. And I'm really pleased that the DPW is least open to kind of putting everything on the table and then we'll see where things kind of shake out. So that's environmental sustainability. In terms of the municipal gas and light department, just a few things. And I may have mentioned this previously as well. The solar incentive is coming to an end the end of December. My understanding is there is still some funding, but it's going to be pretty tight. So if anybody really has been thinking about solar, they should look into the program immediately. There's also a new program there called Connected Homes that has some incentives to connect Wi-Fi devices to help you manage your energy. So that's pretty interesting. And I just wanted to draw attention that they have some really great new pictures and dashboard on their website, as well as a link to a new dashboard that I believe Jen McDonald put together through the Municipal Vulnerability Program that talks about kind of the solar, what we're making. You can go, like I could go today and see that we made X numbers of kilowatt hours today, how much greenhouse gas that offset. So there's real-time information on what our solar is making, on what our solar is saving us. I know from the DPW that they're actually looking at possibly expanding that system that's currently installed at the Water Department off of Broadway. So I urge people to kind of take a look around the municipal gas and light department's website. There's some really good data there. And next week is Public Power Week, so we can all celebrate having our own public power utility. Thank you.
Awesome, Julie. Thanks so much. Steve, I'm going to throw it to you to share Peter's liaison update.
Yes, I'm pinch hitting for Peter today. Peter is a DPW liaison and the early fall has been largely spent for the DPW trying to make up for some lost time due to the COVID shutdown. And they are really trying to maximize the very dry weather to accomplish as much as possible. And they have been handling some of the following. A big thing is the Han Street Yardway site. And the Highway Division has completed Phase 1, speaking of recycling, of gravel recycling, and will begin Phase 2 in late October. And this process involves separating materials, screening, crushing and blending for the final product. And what this process does, it saves the town from having to pay to dispose of, you know, dirt and gravel that we dig up during construction season. And then we can reuse it, recycle it in our own projects. Once we separate it, estimates currently that we've probably created about 4,000 to 6,000 tons of quality material. And we saved $100,000 in recycling and repurchase costs. So that's a great thing. North Ave, we talked a little bit about that tonight, their feasibility study. We are evaluating the building and designing a plan to address the settling floors, particularly in the fleet maintenance shop. They're also evaluating the structure of the roof and its suitability to hold the newer placement roof membrane. We set the subcommittee last week and they'll be going out for comment on some other issues out there. A lot of you had asked about trees. We lost a lot of trees about a month ago. And working with the Light Department and working with the forestry, I think we have already purchased 50. We're purchasing another 50 more. And you're going to see those trees going up over time. We're trying to get in as many as we can now and during this growing season. So stay tuned right there. I also want to give a great shout out to the DPW department. They have done yeoman's work, working with the school department. We have a great synergy between the town and the school in getting all those ventilators and airflow chambers and everything working to make sure that we have safe opening for the schools. And it's been a great working with, you know, Joe Conway and his crew and Bob Shroley and his crew over at the school department. And, you know, I'll tell you, Doug and I, superintendent, talk every day and twice on Sundays on what's going on. And we're very, very pleased how our teams are working together. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you so much, Steve and Peter. Seeing no other comments. Thanks for everyone for great liaison updates. Steve, you are on next for financial update.
Yes, if I can do this correctly, hopefully my screen will be shared. And let's see what happens. Oh, look at that. Did it work?
You are brilliant.
Oh, yeah. I had to have a practice session. So any event, I thought that where we've run through about a little over a about a quarter of the year, third quarter of the year right now, that I talk about where we are and where I think we're going over the next year and beyond. I know this is a, you know, with the COVID-19 and the government shutdown, you know, we are all in a lot of kind of quandary of what's going to go forward. I've been meeting with the Finance Committee and their forecasting subcommittee chaired by Dan Sherman. And boy, that group does a great job and we really get to... I know that Ed and Jonathan, former Finance Committee members, know how much work goes in there. And I think the bottom line is that we are in good shape. And I think that's really because some of the long-term budget policies that we have put and worked together over the last few years. So let's get to some of the updates here. So the COVID-19 response was really a response to a shortfall in revenue. And going through it, I think that when we talked about things, we certainly wanted to maintain programs. We didn't want to, it takes a long time to establish programs. We didn't want to close programs, stop programs, lay off people and that it might take decades to bring them back. We certainly want to position ourselves for the long term. We did look very carefully at timing on capital expenditures and hiring, and that does make a difference in your budget cycle. We wanted to prudently maintain our reserves and we'll show through you how I think we are doing that. And as we have in the past, want to use our current free cash balance to smooth out those issues. So going forward, we'll see what happens. So revenues 2021, pre-COVID, we counted on real estate taxes of 76.2 million. And that's a very stable number. We know what that's going to be. It's last year's tax levy plus times 2.5%, plus 2.5% increase, okay? Local receipts, I had budgeted 7.25 million on local receipts, and that's our excise taxes, our local option meal and hotel taxes, building permit fees, things like that. The Finance Committee had budgeted in their mind 8.25 million. And, you know, they call me and Kevin Gill Chicken Little on these things, but I always like to over-deliver here at the end of the day. Wakefield Little Gas and Light Department pays us a payment in lieu of taxes of close to $1 million a year. State aid, we had gone into the year thinking that would be around 10.9 million. New growth, we had counted on 2.5 million. That is a number that has suffered from the COVID-19, particularly that the power line didn't move along as quickly as we thought. Actually had stalled before COVID-19. And actually, that's a good thing in my mind, that there is still more money on that power line coming in. So that's going to, you know, we will generate that from years, you know, years down the road. School Business Authority, I believe this is the last year we will receive any money from the School Business Authority, and this is on the Woodville School. So the bond will go away and the portion of the state will go away. The state changes their way now. They pay everything upfront. But so this is bittersweet. It's we lose this money, but we lose double of that in the note payments. That's good. Available funds are things like wetland filing fees and things like that, and that was pretty stable. So we were chugging along, looking very good and thought we'd have about $98.5 million pre-COVID. Well, then the COVID hit. And as I mentioned, real estate taxes stayed the same. Local receipts actually plummeted and it could be lower, although I don't think it will. And working with the Finance Subcommittee, we're coming in at 6.25 million that we think we will have this year, for this fiscal year. The reason, one of the main reasons why we think that is because normally we bring in about $1 million in local option meals tax and local option hotel taxes. We have not received any money from the state on either of these two accounts since pre-COVID days. And that's mainly because the state is not collecting the meals tax right now or not requiring the collection from the restaurants. So they're certainly not paying it out. So that's an item that we looked at very closely with the Finance Subcommittee. Available funds, we think that's going to be about the same. That's been the same for a long time. Wakefield Gas and Light Department, they haven't asked for an abatement and our crack liaison is going to tell them no if they do, right Julie? Yeah, absolutely. State aid, I have never gone into a budget at this time of year and will never have set a budget without having a final cherry sheet from the state. We will not have it by the time we go to town meeting. What we do have is an agreement between the state and the state legislature and the governor. That's our major areas of state aid, that being Chapter 70 and unrestricted local aid will remain even with last year, okay? So that's going to be coming in at $10.8 million. I will be thrilled if we make that through the whole year. I say it could be lower because there could be 9C cuts. There could be a change in the budget later on. Things seem to be going well in the state, so hopefully that number will hold. And I'm really not at all that upset with that. As you remember, I was very upset and we didn't get a big bump in state aid on the first cherry sheet when it came out in January. So I never got to be disappointed when it was taken away. So that's good there. School Business Authority, that'll be the same as we mentioned before. So now we've totaling to about 96.2 million. So go from 98.5 to 96.2. So we're at a $2.3 million loss. Or I might say that we do actually know what new growth is. It's 1.25 million. So that's, we know that because Victor has had that certified by the state. So we're at a $2.3 million dollar loss. So how did we handle that? Well, we looked at our first budget projection. We did our tri-board meeting. And we were hoping to go out to about 100 million in different budgets and expenditures. We then unfortunately had to make some cuts at town meeting. We cut that to 98 million or so. So and we did that by cutting about $700,000 out of our operating budgets. That was tough votes that we all took together. We decided to bifurcate our capital expenditures, meaning that we took our capital expenditure amount, which is a little over $2 million. We basically cut that in half with the hopes that maybe that would come back in November. I frankly don't see that because of where we are, but it's a delay. It's not going to go away and I'll show you how we're handling that. So we handled total deductions of about 1.7 million in the budget. And we made up in using, I'm going to suggest we use free cash of $2 million to handle the budget shortfall in November at November town meeting. That's a traditional article we use at every town meeting. I think last year we used over three free cash to smooth things out. This year it's two. So what does this all mean? I mean, forecasting is really about looking at the future years. This year is easy. So I am still a huge Nike Swoosh guy. And which means that I think that our revenues have gone down pretty rapidly in the beginning, as everybody says. Then I see a slow gradual increase over the next few years. There are some people that are the shape of a V. I hate that because that signifies Villanova and they beat Georgetown in the title game in 85. So I could never be a V guy, but they think that there was a rapid decline and a rapid increase in income. I frankly don't see that happening. I see a much more gradual slope. There are other people that think it's a U, will come down quickly and stay level with no increase for a number of years, and then the U will start to go up. I'm a Nike Swoosh guy. I'm a little bit more optimistic and I think we are going to see a slow gradual increase in income. So again, it depends on the shape of the rebound, but I'm a Nike Swoosh guy. We feel, and this is going through the entire Finance Committee, Forecasting Committee, that state aid will increase after this fiscal year at a slow and steady roughly 4% per year. I think gone are those big bumps that we used to get, so I'm counting on that. We do, however, are a little bit more bullish on local receipts. We think local receipts will rebound in fiscal year '22. I think as the economy opens up, as a vaccine comes, hopefully in the beginning of calendar year '22, which will hopefully be in full swing when we get into fiscal year '22. However, I don't see those big increases as we have before. I think a few years ago, we brought in about $9, $10 million in local receipts. I frankly don't think we'll be there, but slow and steady. receipts. I frankly don't see, think we'll be there, but slow and steady. We do see new growth is continuing at 4%. I think there will be some years that are a little bit better, particularly the power line and some of the new constructions that that are going. One thing that was very important to me, and very important to the Finance Committee, is that we don't sacrifice capital, because it has taken a decade to bring that back up. So we are looking to a return to that $2 million in capital in fiscal year 22. So next year, as we're going into with our thought with the Finance Committee on our next year's budget to go back to 2 million in capital, there are a lot of capital projects that have been waiting. We've been chipping away over the years, and I think it's really served us well as you go forward. We feel it is prudent to maintain a 3% to 4% increases in overall budgets. I would stress the three side overall. In meeting with our department heads, we told them to only budget increases for contractual issues. Other than that, to bring that back to Kevin Gill or myself. And what we're planning to do is to kind of ride out the storm for the next years, and our reserves could diminish over the next few years before there's a full recovery. But that is kind of why we had them, when you think about it. A couple of things I wanted to talk about is that there are some COVID-19 that may be new normal costs, and we're going to have to think about that as we model going forward. The other issue is federal funds. Now, Wakefield was allotted $2.4 million under the CARES Act. We have used probably for direct expenses, I would say 600,000, 700,000 or so, and that number changes every day. Certainly a lot with some of the issues that we're taking to make sure that people are safe, and that's what it's there for. However, I have been harping on with our state delegation, and the state itself has been harping on to get some movement in Washington DC that those funds can also be used for revenue replacement. That would really go a long way to solving some problems. In fact, there are some new regs rumored to come out, and the state has a seminar on that, I think actually Thursday of this week. Another thing that we're doing is you may, the council will certainly recall that we have embedded OPEB funding in our budget. Okay, it's embedded in our health insurance budget. We have $1.6 million a year that we budget for OPEB, and it's there. It's a hard spot in our budget. Just because items are hard spots in your budget, that does not mean you need to spend them. So what we are, what we have talked about doing is about holding that money within the budget, so not appropriating it outside of the budget, and then to see what happens. If something, if the bottom falls out for something, that's a hard spot that we could transfer that money out to cover some other expenses. I certainly don't want to do it. I would, I would say that we have worked very hard to get this done, but it may be something that we look at. So we then, working with our Finance Committee, we then looked forward and say, what does this mean? What does this mean for our reserves? What does it mean for us going forward? And a couple of assumptions were made by the Finance Committee in in this model. Number one was that we would receive no extra revenue with the exception of what we have budgeted. So that 6.25 million that I put in for, that we budgeted for local receipts, we would receive no more, not a penny more. Now, traditionally, we have received a lot more. I'm a little bit bullish that I think we will receive a little bit more, but we did not include any of that going forward. We're saying that's going to be zero. The other thing that we put in there going forward is that we said no returns from departments, meaning that every single town department would spend every single penny that was budgeted them every single year for the next five years. Now, you know that that has not happened, that has not been our track record. I don't anticipate it being our track record in the future. We usually return over $1 million a year back to the general fund. And what happens is when revenues are more than we, but when we forecast, or we spend less than we budgeted, all that money rolls into free cash. And that's how we've set our free cash and increased our free cash and reserves over the year. The other thing we thought about doing was to start getting to a schedule where we were adding to our stabilization fund every year and put that into the model. So when we take those assumptions, and again, no extra revenue and no returns from departments, this is what we look at going over the next five years, and then going to fiscal year 29 when things start jumping up again. I will tell you that years ago, in 2008, 2009, if you were to tell me that we had $2 million in free cash and $3 million in stabilization fund, I would have been singing a happy tune. We've gotten greedy over the years. We want those to grow, and I think they will grow. But I think in a more of a dire circumstances here with, again, nobody returning any money, no departments returning money, nothing coming higher than we said, not using one-time revenue, we sell a lot of land or something like that. I pulled all that out, not using any federal, extra federal funds or anything like that. We will still have adequate reserves, better than most, will increase our stabilization, and in, you know, seven, eight fiscal years, and probably before that, not looking at worst-case scenario, we will, we will come out and be okay. This assumes that we maintain all programs, we go back and increase capital, like I said, and that, you know, state government holds pretty copacetic. So that being said, Madam Chair, I am available for any and all questions.
Thank you, Steve. As I've said, as I've said before, I think we are in such great shape compared to a lot of light communities, and and I'll argue that it's maybe a little bit of us, but overwhelmingly you, your leadership and what you've done. I remember the
Great partnership between everybody.
The cold days. And it's amazing that we can have a forecast like this in the middle of COVID, and I think we're doing such, town hall was kept open. We really didn't lack for any services throughout the town. We're not looking at losing people. So this forecast is just very exciting, and I'm so positive. Jonathan, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Mayo. I do want to echo, I think, the great work that went into the forecast, both for you and Mr. Gill, and also the Finance Committee's Forecasting Subcommittee. You know, particularly Dan Sherman, you know, is sort of the genius behind a lot of this modeling. You know, we're definitely lucky to have him, have him as a volunteer for for all this. I had a couple of questions on the assumptions that I just wanted to push on a little bit. And the first was related to local aid from the state. So if 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 I'm remembering correctly, the, so the assumption is that we've got effectively sort of flat local aid built in for fiscal 2021, the current fiscal year. And then do you have that starting to grow by 4% in
Yeah, I have it starting to grow a little bit, yeah.
Okay. I guess, how do we feel about that? I, you know, my, my concern is, you know, we've definitely gotten the state's sort of verbal commitment that they're not going to cut local aid, though, you know, to your point, you know, there's some risk of 9C cuts. I just worry that the the storm is going to hit the state from a fiscal standpoint in 2022 rather than 2021. And so I, I'm wondering if we should assume, you know, at least flat or even some level of declination in local aid for 2022 before they're able to start rebuilding again. I, you know, I, I definitely am with you on sort of the Nike swoosh approach to the recovery, but I also am a little concerned that at least from a state revenue standpoint, we're actually not at the, the, the bottom of that swoosh yet.
Yeah, we certainly spent a lot of time discussing that with the, and played along with a lot of models. There is a lot of, you know, discussion at the state about increasing money for education, and there's still, I think our state delegation would say there still might be some money in the affordable, in the, the new school act, what have you. I am, I am aware of that. I think that local receipts, though, we were holding that low, it all should balance it out. So I'm okay. The other thing is that unlike a lot of other communities, you know, local aid is about, or state aid, excuse me, is about, you know, 10% of our budget. So I'd be a lot more worried about that number if I was in, and it was up around the 60%. So, you know, if it, if it came in a little bit flat, not 4%, I'm looking at, you know, how do I make up $400,000? And I think we can make that up.
Okay.
But it's a good question. It's keeps me up at night.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's, I do think that's one of the bigger variables there, that and locals receipts, obviously. Second question, do we have a census to, you know, you talked about the new normal with COVID, and I recognize it's kind of hard to ask this question when we are, you know, like, one day into, for example, schools being reopened. But do we have a census to sort of what we think some of those long-term incremental expenses might be, or what some of the, what some of the things are that, you know, you and your departments are looking at from a, an expense impact standpoint as we think about the, whatever the new normal looks like?
Well, I think we're really going to beef up more and more technology. And I'm not just talking about making sure everyone gets a new Chromebook, as important as that is. I think it's really looking at the back room, too, is can we, can our network support everything? Because that is, that is a concern of mine, is more people log on, more, more items are done remotely. I think the hybrid is going to continue for a while, and in some form or another. And so I think we are looking at that. In fact, one of the community compact grants that we're going for this year, we're back into the technology section, because we, it's only an every other year thing, is really to look and robust, look at that network, and for the town and the schools, and how do we handle that, that there? So that is kind of part and parcel of a new normal. I think we're going to have to reconsider some of the office space and how that is configured. So that could be part of the new normal. Some new positions, I think that the, using the greeters at town hall has made a big difference. So that's a small amount, but still something that is changing it. And I think also as our staff works more remotely, you know, we are going to have to maybe think about what are they going to have for technology in their own so they can work with us. So those are things that we're looking at, and not to mention all the PPE and all that stuff that we need to have, too. But those are the things that we we think about, and we talk about, and in combining services, are we going to be look at being more mobile? You know, we talked about the library and all the programs they're doing today. Are we going to have to invest in things that are more mobile, more mobile there? So those are kind of the things that we're kicking around as we try to make it through this first six months of this, anyway.
I know, and I'm not going to fault you to do a number on this, but any sense as to like the order of magnitude that we're talking about for those incremental, I mean, are we thinking it's, you know, a million dollars, half a million, more than that? If you had to ballpark, is there, you know, kind of a range that you have in your head in terms of what some of this stuff would, would cost?
You know, I, I think that to redo our network, let's say, at the town hall, and then for the municipal side, that's probably about $200,000 to upgrade that. So school might be, would be double that. Some of the other items. So I think you're looking at some, you know, million-dollar-plus items, but then you don't have to spend it again necessarily, right? You've spent it, and then you bring it down.
Yeah, so the network stuff, you'd think of that more as almost, I mean, that would be a capital expenditure as opposed to, you know, the greeters and the PPE and stuff like that would be, would be operating. Okay. All right, great. And just the last question, I, again, thanks, thanks to everyone for, for the indulgence, but, and I may be the only person who asks this, but would it be possible to share the Excel forecast model that the Finance Subcommittee looks at?
Yes, yes, we have a Finance Committee meeting Thursday night, and after that, I'll make sure they share it.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
You want to play with it. That's what it is.
Thanks, Jonathan. Ed, I saw your hand up next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You, Steve, I, I agree that it makes sense when we look at the reserves, because I almost think of the reserves as almost like a rainy day fund in a way. And if, if you want to call, you know, some crises, you know, a rainstorm, I mean, I think we've had a monsoon this, this year. And so the idea of leaning into the, the reserves, I think it makes a lot of sense for that purpose, because that is why we have it. One of the concerns that, that I was just thinking about is, I know we have some other projects, like, we've obviously talked about the public safety building, and we've really explained how that's been budgeted in and rotated in as things come off. But also keeping in mind, just like kind of forecasting out things like the DPW facility, which isn't going to presumably be that many years off, something we'll have to think about. And also, I'm not convinced that the way in which we do the business of local government is going to be changed on a permanent basis. And I don't know what, what our space requirements are going to be. I mean, a lot of private business had already been doing things like hoteling, where we don't necessarily have everyone at, you're reporting to a desk in a, in a physical office. And does that mean, you know, these technology upgrades we're talking about mean more flexibility for employees so that in fact, some of the space requirements we have now might actually contract versus expand? So I think that that's something that is a bit of an unknown.
May change some of the spaces. So, you know, we can't have people on top of each other. So you're right, there'll be a greater, a bigger space. So there is some, some cost in changing that, but not everyone will be there.
Yeah, but I think even beyond, you know, beyond COVID, beyond vaccine, you know, when we get back to whatever the normal is, that, that could look very different. You know, there could be that kind of more of like a, a sharing arrangement. But I think kind of going back to looking at the budgeting philosophy generally, and I know, having been involved with Finance Committee and involved with the, the, the financial forecasting as well, we often look at this idea, or we have this notion of 3% to 4% per year increases. And I really would encourage everyone to kind of challenge that thinking. Why do we assume that it needs to be 3% to 4% per year? I know, Steve, you're saying 3% on the low side, and I totally understand contractual obligations. There, we're basically talking about salaries that have been negotiated through different union agreements, and those are obviously going to have increases year over year. So I get that, you know, salary is always going to be driving that up. But how, you know, why does it have to be 3% to 4%? You know, why could it not be, you know, flat growth in, in certain departments or certain areas of departments, or maybe even a negative increase, you know, if there are other savings that could be realized? So I think instead of continuing the, the mindset of 3% to 4% is, is our baseline, and 3% is our ideal, I think a deeper dive into, well, where are we at? And is it appropriate that that kind of percentage, frankly, rather arbitrarily, should apply across all operating budgets? For some, you might be able to justify a 5% increase. For others, you might be able to justify, you know, reducing it by 2%. So I don't know to what extent we don't, it would benefit us to not apply such a uniform approach across the board. Again, understanding that we have to segregate out the, the employee contract obligations, because I know that those, those, we don't really have much movement with.
No, thank you. I, I, I do want to stand what you're saying, and that was kind of in an aggregate, but I'd like to see that number lower myself. Thank you.
Maureen.
Um, thank you. And I'm just going to echo what Ann said, Steve, that you and FinCom just put together a great thing, and we are in better shape than a lot of our surrounding towns, and I thank you for that. I just, I just kind of contrary to what was just said before me, I just want to talk as we start talking about surviving this pandemic that will likely last longer than we all thought when we thought it'd be two weeks of working from home. And as you talk about your forecast and some of the great stuff, I went to town hall today, and a great greeter up front, and, you know, I've been, I think for the last four years, I've kind of talked about a townwide social worker. And I think in this time where we have people, you know, the Council of Aging does a certain population, and kids in school have a certain population, there's the whole breadth of us in the middle, that a townwide social worker, I think, to help people with everything that's going on, I think I, you know, I think it's a solid investment. There's a lot of grants out there, but I'm going to just reiterate. And somebody that coordinates kind of with, you know, the domestic violence work that WAVE does, the, you know, Board of Health, the Library, Council of Aging. And so, so just thinking about people in town and vulnerable populations in town, you know, myself included, but all of us don't fit into that Council of Aging or in the school, all of us in the middle. And then on that, and I, I just want to remind everyone, when we voted on the new economic development position, manager position, we actually purposely called it economic and community development. And I think I want to just be really mindful, and I'd love to, you know, whatever hybrid model you come up with, I'd love to meet the person when they start, or people when they start, and really talk about what that community aspect means in term, in addition to the economic development, because I think they're so tied hand in hand. To, to echo what Ed talked about, the chamber did a great job on the sidewalk Saturdays. I was down there. But, you know, I think we have a responsibility as the town council to do, to do more and talk about those local businesses, and how we help them survive, whether it be better internet service, or, you know, hotspots, or workspaces that we can all use when we're tired of working from home with, you know, some of us four kids running around, as I look at Jonathan. So I think there's, there's creative things, and I, you know, I keep on saying that I think pandemic gives us an opportunity to be more creative, just like that greeter, who was lovely today. I don't know her name, Steve, but she was, she was lovely. I signed, I signed the warrant.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Only Jonathan and I had gone in. Only Jonathan and I had gone in, I don't, a little plug to everyone else. But um, so so anyway, just, just, I think, as we talk about budgeting and 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 I just don't want to forget about the community and the economic and wellness director position and not forget that wellness. Because I think that's just going to be even more crucial as we move past six months of this.
Okay, thank you.
Jonathan, did you have something else, or is your hand still up?
I I did, just, you know, two things. First, to kind of expand on on Council Botten, Council Dubrowski's comments. You know, the the budgets that we need to work through as a Town Council over the next few years are going to be more difficult than I I think we've we've had to, you know, they've been in the last couple of years. You know, we've had an extraordinary extraordinary run of economic growth. And as we think about the choices that we need to make, one of the things that's going to be important is thinking about how we prioritize. And so I I know I gave a quick update last time on the the work that, you know, will be kicking off on the vision and value statement. But I think that becomes really important as we think about some of the budgetary choices that we have to make. What is it that as a community we want to see? What is it that we want to be as a town? That can be a guidepost to, I think, you know, discussing some of the challenging things that we'll have to discuss and, you know, trying to tease out where are those areas where, you know, maybe there are some changes that we can make that result in cuts. But where are those areas where we feel like we need to invest? And, you know, Council, but I think, you know, when you talk about sort of the the social worker and things like that, those might be areas that, you know, we think really warrant an investment of resources, even in a in a difficult budget situation. So it's just one point I wanted to make, just to tie into that discussion. Second point, completely unrelated, but I know when we went through the 2021 budget and when we talked about IT, there was some discussion around IT security. And I I just maybe would kind of put the request out there, you know, through you, Madam Chair, and Mr. Mayo, that we have an update. Again, it probably needs to happen in executive session around IT security. Because certainly, as we are doing more remotely and as the network is getting bigger and as more people are accessing it, I I think the the need to understand sort of where we are from a security standpoint is becoming more and more important. So would maybe ask that we can bring that to a a future meeting just to understand, you know, where we are and and what some sort of opportunities and and needs are as we go forward.
Okay.
Julie.
Sorry. Actually, Jonathan really kind of said what I was going to say, but I I will say, I do think we're definitely going to have economic and financial constraints. But I think this is a time we're going to have to really kind of think about going beyond business as usual and thinking about long term impacts, you know, thinking about paybacks that are not just, you know, a year away or within any of our terms, or, you know, we're going to have to really be thinking 10 and 15 years out, and they're going to be very difficult conversations. But I just really, you know, challenge my colleagues here to be to be thinking about what a new workplace is going to look like, like Ed said. You know, what what climate is going to do to to our town and and how we're going to have to be the frontline of resiliency. So, you know, that's just the challenge I think we're all going to have.
Thank you, Julie, well said. Does anyone else have any comments or questions for Steve? Ed, is that a new hand? Okay.
I just want, I just want to say quickly, I I just have a real concern because I think that a lot of our residents are in a very precarious financial position right now. And the idea of thinking about what tax increases could look like in the in the coming years, especially the next, the next two years, I think, could be very, very negatively impactful for a lot of folks. There are just a lot of people at all levels, from, you know, service industry workers to executives that, you know, top executives that are not seeing the kind of 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 income coming in as a result of of COVID. And it's not being, you know, wholly replaced by, you know, whatever mechanisms we currently have in place. And so I wholly understand, you know, what, Mr. Mayo, where you're saying, you know, trying to average about 3%, 3% would be your goal. And I know that that means some are five, some are, some are, you know, one. But I I'm really, really concerned about what this, what this kind of future budgeting, especially in the short term, is going to look like for every taxpayer, you know, because it's going to be really difficult. I think it's already difficult for a lot of people to to meet their expenses, meet their current tax, you know, payments to to the town. And the idea of thinking about increases, you know, across the board to to cost for services is going to just, you know, I think, add that much more of a layer of 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 impact. And as we know from the recent years, property value is going up also, assessments are growing up. And that's another real concern, too, because with, you know, every time that someone's property goes up, that's great. But if they're not selling, it means that they have a higher tax bill. And so I just, the combination of those two things, I think, is going to hit people potentially especially hard, you know, next go around. And I want to see what we can do to try to avoid it. And if it means we have to tap into reserves a bit more, again, that's, that, I think, is ultimately what they're there for, for times like this, when people are most in need, and that's kind of across the board. So I would just ask, and Mr. Mayo, you and Kevin Gill and FinCom do a great job, no question. And and Dan Sherman is is a whiz at this, so I'm not pretending for a moment that I have all the answers. But I do think just we can't lose sight of the fact that taxpayers are going to really be hit and are already experiencing real financial difficulties here. So whatever we can do to lessen that burden, I think, is so important now.
To 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 talk about the taxpayers for a second, I was going to save this to the end, it's a great segue. We've had around 150 taxpayers come in to take advantage of the 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 change that we made via the local option, a matching of the circuit breaker. So I think the Town Council should feel very good about that. Probably came at such a great time for some of these people in the middle of this. So thank the Council, that took a long time to get that to the state legislature. I'm happy to see that right now, so that's pretty good.
Great. Thank you, Stephen, thanks, everyone. I'm not sure that what we all said was mutually exclusive either. I think we all can be mindful of the budget moving forward and also think about projecting out and in helping folks adding positions where that makes sense to taking away positions where that makes sense. So I thank, thank everyone for their thoughtful comments. Any announcements?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Tom.
Yeah. On Saturday, Wakefield lost one of its finest citizens and I, one of my best friends, Kim Tamagini, was a Wakefield resident, 1962. He's a past, he was a past member of the Wakefield Finance Committee, and he was a great old school lawyer. The, there'll be a wake for him at Nichols Funeral Home in Wilmington from four to seven on Friday, followed by funeral mass on Saturday at 11:00 at St. Thomas, also in Wilmington.
Oh, thank, thank you, Tom. I am, I was sitting at a table with him very recently, like within the last year. I worked with his son, so I I knew Jimmy. But that's a, that's a super accomplished family, and I'm sorry for your loss and for the Tamagini's loss. Any other announcements? I have, Jonathan.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just wanted to talk just a minute about voting. So, you know, we we talked a little bit about in terms of the budget, how sort of COVID has changed the way we do business in a lot of ways. And and I think one of the positive things about COVID is that it's brought, you know, what I would think of as is really welcome flexibilities in terms of how we vote. You know, we saw the expansion of early voting in the state primary. We saw, you know, we've seen voting by mail come forward. You know, people have really adapted to that. I I believe the number in terms of folks that voted by mail in the September primary was about 4,200 in Wakefield. And certainly, our our Town Clerk, Betsy Sharon, and her staff have done really an outstanding job, both adapting to those changes and making sure that the options that are available to our residents are options that they're able to exercise easily and seamlessly. I I think unfortunately, you know, we've seen a narrative, not just nationally, but also locally, that this idea that some of these options for voting, particularly voting by mail, is not something that's safe, or it's something that lends itself to fraud. And so I wanted to bring this up because I I think for us as a town body, it's important for us to be absolutely clear that there is no basis whatsoever, in fact, that voting by mail in any way, shape or form lends itself to fraud. It's simply factually not true. And in fact, I think as we look at both our experiences here in Massachusetts recently, but in the other 21 states that allow voting mail in the United States Armed Forces, which have allowed voting by mail for decades, you see that they, it is a safe and and sort of welcome option for people to exercise their right to vote. And so I bring this up because I I do want to make sure, again, that, you know, we as a town body and as town leaders assure our residents that however they decide to vote, whether it's at the polls on Election Day, whether it's voting by mail, whether it's dropping off an early ballot at the the box that's outside Town Hall, or whether it's physically going into Town Hall to fill out their ballot, that they can have complete and absolute confidence in the integrity of their vote, that their vote will be counted fairly regardless of who they vote for or how they vote. And so I put that out there and just remind residents to please make sure, however you decide to exercise your right to vote, whoever you decide to vote for, just please make sure you do so. And if you have any questions, I know the Town Clerk's, again, Town Clerk's Office, again, has done just a tremendous job of engaging with residents, and I know they're available for folks that have any questions or issues they want to ask. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you, Jonathan, excellent point. Maureen, I see your hand up.
Yeah, just echoing everything Jonathan said, and also at Town Hall today, I saw the new ballot box that is beautiful and white and and right to the right of the front door. So ballots have not been mailed yet for November. As I checked in with Betsy, they've had over 9,000 requests for vote by mail or absentee ballots, and she's expecting that to go up to 10,000. And just for everyone to know, every single one of those, she has to manually input that she mailed it to that. So that's 10,000 data entries. So Betsy and her staff are amazing. But check out the box that you don't have to go through the US Postal System if you don't want. Just one update that I talked about last time is the Wakefield Alliance Against Violence is doing a virtual 5K. So run on your own. While I was at Town Hall today, I spent a lot of time there. I picked up their mask that they are doing for everyone running. And go to waveonline.org to learn more about the 5K virtually that they'll have this year.
Great, thanks, Maureen. Ed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I mentioned before that if I told you, you know, especially in this discussion of all the the taxes and spending and the like, that if we had a way to be able to get many, many more dollars into our town by just going online, you definitely would do it. So again, I want to remind everyone to please, please complete your census if you've not done it already. 2020census.gov, the deadline has been extended through October 31st, so you still have some time to do it. And literally, it's, you know, it's, it's, the federal money gets allocated based upon what our reporting is. So if our reporting is strong, our, our, you know, tax dollars, revenue coming in will be strong. And so we want to make sure that we're counted. It has such a direct impact on our schools, on our services, on our, you know, our our tax bills. So please, if you haven't completed it, make make sure you do. It only takes, you know, 30 seconds to two minutes to do it. And and please just check in with your neighbors, too, or your your parents or or your kids to make sure that they've done it as well, but only if they live in Wakefield, otherwise, I'm just kidding. But it's just so important. So just make sure everyone, please do it if you live in Wakefield. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Ed. And I was reminded by Maureen, wonderful reminder, that please get your flu shot. Board of Health gave over 200 on Saturday, and we'll have future dates to dispense more flu shots. If you, you know, have a, get your meds at CVS, or it it takes about three minutes to get your flu shot there. So let's be like Australia and have a super low flu season. That would be fabulous. Any, any further announcements? I don't see anyone else's hands. Give a wave if you have anything. Steve, do you have announcements?
No, I'm all good.
Excellent. Any matter matters not anticipated within 48 hours? Excellent, nothing there. Our next regular Town Council meeting is our joint meeting with School Committee. It will be October 15th at 7:00 PM. And folks should, you know, tune in as we're appointing two members of the School Committee during this year. That that's so important. Thank you all for watching. If I could have a motion and a second for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Jonathan, seconded by Julie. Ed?
Yeah.
Myself, yes, Jonathan.
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Peter? Excellent, thank you all so much. There's a little chat happening between two older men at 9:00 PM that I'd like to go see. So we made it. Have a wonderful week and take care.